The Highway Department, Mr. Horrman.
Morning. I don't really have too much, other than that tank. I'm asking to see if we can get that approved on getting the power ran to that total tank up there. The reason it took so long was we was waiting on that third quote. And it came in being the lowest with Layton Wood.
Is that a local contractor?
Yes. He's done work for the new building as well, so we've dealt with him before.
Did you do cement work for him?
No.
How quickly can this be accomplished?
He'll start on probably tomorrow.
Is it a two-day project?
Roughly is what he said, yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion that we allow Elwood Electric to do the work for $2,860. I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Jane, did you need...have you got copies of the other two bids?
They should all be there.
Yeah.
You have?
Yes. We got them. I wonder if you had them.
Other than that, we've got the warrant. We had the floodgates ready to fit on the drive-fords. Got all them up. And the drainage issue we had on the country club with the driveway, we got that taken care of as well. Just kinda patching things up, getting ready for whatever Mother Nature brings us. Kinda sums everything up, as of right now, anyway.
Okay. I have opening bids from the Highway Department. Is that...
At 9:15.
At 9:15.
Richard, we got salt.
Good shake.
Boxes ready to go.
Everything lubed up.
Sounds like we might need them this weekend.
Yeah. Hope not, but part of it. Got plenty of salt and everything. We're ready to go.
Very good.
That's it.
Good job.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Bill, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just have a few things to let you know about. Duke Energy still hasn't started on the community correction in the jail yet, but they're due to start possibly this week. They did do a walk-through of the courthouse, and he came back and told me it was too big for their project, so...
Well, I talked to Mr. Orbin at a meeting the other night, and he said there is another program, the UCAS, that we can apply for.
Okay.
So we need to talk to him.
If it's too big, can we do it in sections?
He just said it was too big for the project that he was doing right now, so that's all he told me.
Smart Watt only handles up to 100 kilowatt-hour usage and our kilowatt-hour usage in the courthouses. Above that, but there's still programs that Duke Energy has for larger facilities.
We could give us a discount, then we could...
Good luck on that one.
But I'd like to know something. If they're gonna do something, if not, then I need to replace some can lights in the courtroom. I hate to do it without, and then them come right back in and switch them out.
Well, call down to the main office and find out from Mr. Orbin, which he's the manager down there, and find out what programs they have available, and see if we can't get somebody in here to do the assessment.
Okay. I've been doing some work at the Community Correction Building. I haven't been over it, but I was never involved in that, but I have been recently. They had no heat over there in the back, so they had the wrong filters and the wrong belts, and the burners were rusted into, so we get that all taken care of.
That sounds good.
Make sure that it's serviced right now, because that's the life of the equipment. Okay, that's all I have. I'm sorry.
Are we still working on the glass project?
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, I called him yesterday and the day before. This is Tuesday. I called him Monday and today, and I haven't heard from him yet.
Are we hopeful to complete that project by the end of the month?
As soon as he gets that glass, as soon as he gets it to me, we'll get it in.
You're still putting the man, aren't you?
Yeah, we're putting the man, so we're just waiting on him to get them to us. And these big ones are, I mean, they're inch and a quarter thick, so there's so many layers that he has to do at a time, and he's having, I think he's having a problem getting the right tent, because they're one way, or not one way, but you can see in, but they can't see you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sheriff, did you have anything for us today?
He took off.
He took off?
Yeah.
Michael?
Morning.
Good morning.
I don't have anything for approval. I just have my normal monthly report. We had more emails this month than last, by about another 15,000. Phone calls were right around the same where we were before, with right around 3,000 in that area difference. 69,000 calls and it's at 37,000 basically answered. I did not have a chance, time to break it down and find out how long each of those answered calls was. So that's everything from "I picked up the phone and nobody was there," or "I picked up the phone and talked 30 minutes." I mean, that's just answered. That's the only thing it told me. And then there's the breakdown of my tickets. 171 for me, 173 for Mike, two all, which was some server issues for the website, and then 68 city and 174 county. Got a bunch of research stuff going on, software and that, and then we're still fighting with people trying to hack the email server, so we're getting a lot of hits per day of people trying to get in there. I don't know why. I don't know what's the fascination with our email server is, but we're still getting some people that are...if you get the wrong password five times within about 20 minutes, it will lock up the account. So we'll still get some people calling and say, "I was in my email, it was working fine, and then it locked me up." And that's what happens is somebody outside puts the password in wrong five times, and it locks the actual user out as well. So we're still dealing with that when I get a bunch of...
Have you talked to other counties similar size?
Oh, yeah. It's not just us. I mean, what it is, is the hackers are looking for open servers. And sometimes they're doing it for militias, and they're trying to get in there and hit our stuff with ransomware or something like that. But a lot of times, it's also they're just trying to get, use our email server to send out spam email, and if they make a cent per spam email for whatever scam they're sending out, that's still quite a bit of money when you're talking 500,000 spam email a day. So, and it makes it easy for them if it's not their equipment.
That's true.
So a lot of times, that's what they're doing. So, yeah, it's just the regular hacker stuff. They're just University of, I think it was University of Los Angeles around Christmas last year got hit with a ransomware that encrypted all of their servers. And they had voice-over-IP phones, they had all their classroom stuff, and all of their website and other stuff, all through the same servers that got encrypted, and it cost them, I think it was $30,000 to pay the ransom to get everything unlocked. So that could be what's trying to go to. They're trying to get in there and thinking that if they encrypt everything and get us all locked up, that we'll go pay the ransom. And we won't. I mean, with the email server, we've got, it's got an automated backup. If the system got encrypted, we would fall back to one of the backups. Yeah, we might lose a couple hours or days worth of email, but we're not gonna lose the whole thing. So I am still working to get into the old email archive, which has, I believe, around 1.5 million archived emails in it. The archive system that I've been using since April is 690,000 emails in it since April. So there's a lot of stuff out there, so... And of course, each day, I'm still spending probably an hour to, hour and a half sometimes keeping, trying to keep up with the new threats that are coming out and reading articles about this new trick or that new exploit, and keep, trying to keep things up to date to block all that stuff, so... Any questions for me?
No.
Thank you.
Oh, the one other thing right now is our projector doesn't work, so...
It wouldn't work, huh?
Well, it broke yesterday, and I was trying to work on it. Just the transmitter's not working, so trying to fix that, so...
Okay, thank you. Nikki Crowe?
Say it again, I don't know. Maybe?
Nikki?
Yeah, you're up.
Your timing was excellent.
Is that allowed? Should I just go up here? Yes, please.
Sorry, I kind of got thrown in at the last minute, so I'm not 100% sure what all information you need. I'm with the extension office, and we, the educators, are in the office. We were granted the winter recess, just like last year and the year before, where we are not working from the 22nd through the 3rd. So we would like to request that the office be closed. Kayla would be the only one, our office manager, in the office, and she has a lot of comp time from there. I think she's been over 200 hours in two weeks, so it's a good way to use that without really affecting anything going on in the office.
So you're requesting to have the office closed from December 22nd?
22nd, and then we'll be open on the 3rd.
Re-opened on the 3rd?
Yes, ma'am.
And you say this has been past practice?
Yes.
And what's that? Is it closed period or just closed to the public, or...
It's just closed period. Per your grants, on winter recess to their educators, as part of their professional team, like their faculty and their staff on campus.
Okay.
So they're outlining, people get granted that as well.
Okay, all right. And our employees will be taking comp time or vacation?
Yes, we only have one, and it's Kayla, our office manager, and she's sitting on a lot of comp time from the fair, so...
I'll move to the crew of closing the office from December 22nd, June 1st, 3rd. I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it now 9:15? And we have bids for the Highway Department. I assume that's as far as...
That's what this stack is, yes.
This is Culver. This is Terry.
Garrett, do you want to name them to make sure that there's nobody here that thinks they submitted one, because we had that problem last year. Somebody had mailed one, but it got lost in the shuffle somewhere.
And what do you want?
Like maybe name them first, and then make sure that there's not somebody here that thinks we should have it and we don't.
We have Marathon Petroleum Company. Asphalt Materials Incorporated. Strauzer Construction. Harvis Land Co-op. Vanderbelde Sales and Service. New Point Stone. Harvis Land, I've already caught that. Civil Con. Collie. St. Regis Culver.
Is there anyone else here that...maybe some other bids that we didn't call?
Is there urban material in there?
Yes.
I MI.
No.
No.
We only have one stone bid.
That's New Point?
New Point. What is...
I MI.
Go point out the name.
I never got one down here.
And I'm sure that's all I have.
Okay.
Here, all these bids are due today.
I'm sorry?
Those are all these bids?
Bid for the Highway Department.
Culver.
We'll go through them here in a second. As soon as we get them all over.
Variety is different.
I'm sorry?
It's a variety of everything we do.
Start with the fuel bid. Harvest Land Co-op has submitted bids for gas and diesel fuels. I don't know, we'll go through numbers at this time. We'll let Richard go through everything before releasing the bid numbers. I think we should have let Richard go through.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that all bids be taken under advisement before we have time to thoroughly review them. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Then we have, it appears that we have three bids for asphalt materials. Asphalt Materials, Inc. Terry Asphalt Materials. And Marathon Petroleum Company. We have, it appears that we have only one bid for stone and gravels, and that bid is from New Point Stone Company.
And we have a bid from Civil Con for culverts, and also from Vanderbelde, Vanderbelde Service in Michigan, and from St. Regis Culvert.
And we'll have, we'll ask Richard to review all of these bids and make sure that they meet state road standards, and we'll readdress it at our next meeting.
Works good for me, plus we're missing one, so I'll get ahold of Donnie and see what's up with that. I don't think anybody in here from I MI is... Need some checking on that.
We may, we may need to re-advertise for stones and gravel.
All righty. That's good.
If that's not, if New Point's not maybe a sufficient number, or sufficient bid, because we'll have to...in order for I MI to submit now, that we'll have to do a new advertisement for it.
Unless it's gotten somewhere between me and Jane, and we don't know where it's at.
Yeah. Yeah. If they find it in our system, then...
We'll go from there.
Thank you, Richard. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank all the vendors that did submit bids, and we look forward to working with everyone.
Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Leota, for calling me mister. I typically tell people that my name is Dan, and my father was Mr. Parker, but...
He was Bob.
He was Bob. Being you knew him so well, I'm just gonna stop right there. Just a short report this morning. I think you've heard me state before, there are about 3,144 counties in the United States, and that's counting parishes or the equivalent to a county. I think Alaska and Louisiana. Alaska has boroughs, and Louisiana has parishes, but the equivalent is about 3,144 counties. And virtually all have some form of an economic development corporation vying for projects helping with retention and expansion in their respective counties. And Fayette County is no different. With those 3,144 counties, there are public and private economic development corporations. Some cities have their own, some counties and municipalities are big enough where they have several different ways they're trying to attack it. So it's safe to say there are more than one for each county. It's estimated about 4,500 in the United States. With that, as opportunities become known or available, and a lot of those come through the state of Indiana, through the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, they send requests for information to each of the counties that are eligible. And sometimes, the eligibility has to do with the location in the state, whether it's the northern third of the state, or the middle section, or the southern part, depending on where the company is choosing to locate. We, we're in that middle band that goes from kind of the middle of the state, about 31, 35 counties, and we'll get requests for information, and many times, we apply and respond to those requests for information. We've responded to 13 of them in 2017. We receive more than that, but a lot of the time, we cannot respond because of what they're asking for. As an example, they may ask for an existing building with 45-foot ceilings, or a existing building that is food grade, or an existing building with a clean room. We don't have that. More often than not, though, it is five miles or less to the interstate, and that knocks us out of the box. If it's 10, I always apply, because there is a parcel of land that we're, we, the city owns for economic development purposes that is 10.45 miles, and yes, I have it down to the 10th of a mile. And we, we apply for those. We just did apply for one that is very involved, and I'm not trying to get sympathy or, oh gee, it's really hard work, but they want to know so many different formulas, tax formulas, and comparisons to businesses in the region, very close estimates on abatements, a major incentive package that we would supply for them, and we, we do that. But it's very involved, and it's, 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 it's pretty darn difficult. And we, and we use every tool at our disposal, and we use the assessor here in the courthouse, they help us, their vendor, they help us. We'll use our own CPA, they help us, so that when we submit, everything is correct and very close to, as close as we can get it to what we would actually offer a company that we're trying to attract. With that, there were also two retention projects that we did this year. For the most part, they look like they're going to be successful. I really don't want to mention the names of either one of these projects, but they're in Connerville, they're staying, and one of them looks as though they're gonna double the size of their employment with their new location here in town. And when that is complete, I will be shouting from the rooftops who it is and how many employees it is and so forth. But for now, I cannot. Last thing I wanted to discuss, because Connerville sits in the county, we have a program called, or it's really a tool that I use for economic development, it's called the Enterprise Urban, or the Urban Enterprise Association, UEA, or the Enterprise Zone. And I don't know how this is gonna work on the camera here, but as you can see, this is the Enterprise Zone, and these, this was designed and developed for communities that were economically distressed, that had lost a lion's share of employment. And you can see ours goes up to about 21st Street, and over to Fairmont, around 18th, down the side that kind of borders the river. It goes all the way to the Fifth Street Bridge and around, you can kind of see where it goes. So businesses and residents in this area have some unique advantages that people outside of the zone do not have. If you're an employer in the zone, you have some terrific tax savings. Say you had $100,000 a year tax liability, you would be on the hook for about 25% of that, and that would, that money would go to the zone. And then those monies are redistributed throughout the zone for various projects. One of them is the facade program that's going on now. Another is the paint program. The zone has granted monies to worthwhile nonprofits, like the House of Ruth and others. So this is a great program. It also has benefits to the employees. The employees can get a tax credit for their incomes if they live and work in the zone. So it's a unique tool that we use for economic development. In some cases, it's better than an abatement. I tell the people that apply, I'll tell you, someone who's planning on using it is George's Pharmacy. We've been working on that project from the get-go, and as you can see, that construction underway on Fifth Street. You don't have to appear in front of a council to get approval, whereas you do for an abatement. If it was out in the county, they'd appear before. I think it's, I think it's you in the county council. You don't have to do that with the Enterprise Zone. You just fill out the SB1 form and just basically, if you live in the zone or have a business in the zone, you're eligible. So we encourage people to participate in this, because it's, it does represent some tax savings, and it's something also that EDG is paid to manage. It's one of the, one of the things that the Economic Development Corporation here in town does. So I wanted to let you know that, and if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer anything that I can.
Mr. Parker, I appreciate the information. I asked Dan if we could kind of set up a monthly, somewhat of a monthly report for our meeting. I...
very close to, as close as we can get it to what we would actually offer a company that we're trying to attract. With that. There were also two retention projects that we did this year. For the most part, they look like they're going to be successful. I really don't want to mention the names of either one of these projects, but they're in Connerville, they're, they're staying. And one of them looks as though they're going to double the size of their employment with their new location here in town. And when that is complete, I will be chouting from the rooftops who it is and how many employees it is and so forth. But for now, I cannot. Last thing I wanted to discuss, because Connerville sits in the county. We have a, a program called, or it, it's really a tool that I use for economic development. It's called the Enterprise Urban, or the Urban Enterprise Association, UEA or the Enterprise Zone. And I don't know how this is going to work on the camera here, but as you can see, this is the Enterprise Zone. And these, this was designed and developed for communities that were economically distressed, that had lost a lion's share of employment. And you can see ours goes up to about Twenty-first Street and over to Fairmont around Eighteenth, down the side that kind of borders the river. It goes all the way to the Fifth Street Bridge and around, you can kind of see where it goes. So businesses and residents in this area have some unique advantages that people outside of the zone do not have. If you're an employer in the zone, you have some terrific tax savings. Say you had a hundred thousand dollar a year tax liability, you would be on the hook for about twenty-five percent of that. And that would, that money would go to the zone. And then those monies are redistributed throughout the zone for various projects. One of them is the facade program that's going on now. Another is the paint program. The zone has granted monies to worthwhile nonprofits like the House of Ruth and others. So this is a, a great program. It also has benefits to the employees. The employees can get a tax credit for their incomes if they live and work in the zone. So it's a unique tool that we use for economic development. And in some cases, it's better than an abatement. I tell the people that apply, I'll tell you, someone who's planning on using it is George's Pharmacy. We've been working on that project from the get-go. And as you can see, that construction underway on Fifth Street. You don't have to appear in front of a council to get approval, whereas you do for an abatement. If it was out in the county, they'd appear before. I think it's, I think it's you and the county council. You don't have to do that with the Enterprise Zone. You just fill out the SB one form and just basically if you live in the zone or have a business in the zone, you're eligible. So we encourage people to participate in this because it's, it does represent some tax savings and it's, it's something also that EDG is paid to manage. It's one of the, one of the things that the Economic Development Corporation here in town does. So I wanted to let you know that. And if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer anything that I can.
Mr. Parker, I appreciate the information. I, I asked Dan if we could kind of set up a monthly, somewhat of a monthly report for our meeting. And he graciously granted me that request. And I greatly appreciate that because I think it'll help get more information out.
And I want that, I want that information to go out. We are, we are busy and Leota knows, she sits on our board. And there is always a flurry of activity going on. We do a lot more than just retention, attraction, and expansion. I mean, we're, we're, we're highly involved in the Regional Planning Commission, we're highly involved in a lot of community development. In order to attract businesses to this community. Downtown, we're, we're highly involved in, in the Main Street program. We're highly involved in the Chamber. When I got this job, I didn't sit on a single board, with the exception of the Graphic Arts Advisory Board out of the Vocational School. I'd been on that for four or five years. I'm on thirteen boards now, which is insane. And I'm going to pair some back, but the, the reason I'm on those boards is because they inter, they interlock or inter, interface with a lot of what economic development is doing. For us to have a great community that'll attract other businesses and professionals to come to our, our town, we need to tune everything up a little bit. From our appearance, the amenities, our cultural refinement. That's why the Art Association was so important that, that that happened. So I thank you, Gary, for asking me to come here and explain a little bit of this. And my game plan is to do that only once a month so you don't get Dan Parker overload. I don't want that to happen. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Dan?
Yes.
Do people who live in the Urban Enterprise Zone, don't they apply also for scholarships?
Yes, forgot that. Good point.
There are scholarships available. Well, I know that.
Absolutely.
One time I was on the Urban Enterprise Zone board.
Yes, yes.
Because I lived in that area. And I know a young lady that didn't have any other eligibility and she was able to get a scholarship to help her go to college because she lived in the Urban Enterprise Zone.
In fact, there are, there are a laundry list of benefits if you live or have a business in the zone that I would recommend you come down to our office and see what they, they are. But you're right, and thank you for mentioning that. If you have a student in the Enterprise Zone, that geographic area that I pointed out on the map, they're eligible for a scholarship. And pretty much all you got to do is apply because we don't have that many that apply.
I think it's one of those unknown scholarships.
It is, it truly is.
People don't know about, so that's why I mentioned it.
Also, yeah, Dan, I might pass this on to you. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but I received an email from the Association of County Commissioners, Indiana Association of County Commissioners this week. That the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs has released information on their historic renovation grant program. I don't know if you've.
Yeah, we, we, we have that. And I, I work with Donna Schroeder on that. In fact, all those. All those grants, we, we, I don't know why, but by default, we get every one of them. Between Diana Wright and myself, we, we take a look at every one of the ones that we can legitimately apply for, and we do.
Well, this one, just a bit of information to the general public, this, this one appears that it is more designed for the private businesses and, and private historical homes and, and so on and so forth. So it's, it's available out there through the.
Oakra?
Yep, through Oakra. And for anyone that might be interested here in Connerville, I know we've got some historical sites that are trying to restore.
Mike Sparks up in the hill.
And, and that money could be available for, to help them with those restoration projects. So I just wanted to make sure you knew about it.
Yeah. I don't know if I knew about that exact one, but I, I see so many of these Oakra communications every month. Some of them we're, we're a good fit for and some of them, they're a stretch.
Right. But I think this one's more for private.
That would be a good one for the, absolutely.
I didn't quite understand it, but it, it ranges, the funding ranges from ten thousand up to a hundred thousand dollars. So it's, it's not change.
I'll give Mike Sparks a call, make sure he's aware of that.
Or anyone else.
Or any of them.
That's doing a historical project. Our, our whole downtown basically has just been deemed a historical site or they're working on it.
Yeah. And, and that's where, and Donna, she's ahead of the art, the Historic Connerville. She's also in the Main Street program, that newly, newly formed Main Street, Discover Connerville. So I'll mention that to her too.
Those businesses need to be aware of that, that money being available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colin, did you have anything for us?
Yeah, I have a contract for quality checks up here for Sheriff to sign. I believe you passed it with any my approval last time.
Yes.
So there it is. When it comes to the savings.
Yeah, the.
She didn't foresee any savings this year, but she said if any were to come up that weren't pharmaceuticals, I believe, then we could do an addendum to the contract to.
Determine that percentage.
Exactly.
Okay. Was there any other? That was the only thing.
There was a starting date, that was twenty seventeen, I, it's changed to twenty eighteen now. Yeah.
Is there any mail?
This is just your signature.
Are there any other department heads that wanted to be heard from that we haven't so far?
He had it in his hand. This is another bid that we have received from IMI for, it appears, stone and gravel as well. And ask that Jane enter that in the minutes as well.
I believe that sums all of them up.
Thank you.
Derbyshire doesn't bid any more?
That's New Point Stone.
That's New Point Stone now. Okay, alright, thanks, Richard.
We have the approval of two thousand and eighteen holiday schedule. You've seen that. Do you have any changes or do you want to?
Jane? What you sent out does not include the election days.
Yesterday. Primary election day and general election day? Okay, well, that person has it.
You got a slow computer, just ain't got it on yet. I didn't realize the paper copies were different than the electronic copies.
Sorry.
My concern is next year, with an election year, we've always used two election days as holidays. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that brings us up to fourteen holidays. I guess that's very generous.
That's following the state.
I understand. That'd be my only concern, but.
Okay, on behalf of all employees, let me give you the evil glare if you think about taking away any of our holidays.
I appreciate that, Jane.
I'd accept a motion to accept the holiday schedule as presented.
I'll leave to accept it.
Reluctantly second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. The approval of the two thousand and eighteen meeting schedule?
I'm going to approve that second.
Been moved and seconded to approve that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Approval of the two thousand and eighteen pay schedule?
I'll move to approve that also second.
Been moved and seconded for two thousand and eighteen pay schedule. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Are there any patron concerns this morning? I'd accept a motion for approval of claims and payroll.
I'm going to approve the claim and payroll.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Is anything else to come before the Ward of Commissioners? If not, I'll accept the motion for.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Thank you.